Good evening, folks. I'd like to call this council meeting to order on May the 5th at 7:00 PM 2020. I'd like to turn it over to the mayor for a flag salute and indication.
Okay, we're gonna skip the borough prayer and like us, take a moment, make it back to people that are on the front line and be polite. Okay. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of America. Republic. With which stands. Under God.
Under God. Indivisible.
Living in justice.
Just for our.
Bob, what do you got to dial up?
What's that, Jay?
All right. Go ahead, Jason.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, so if you're not speaking, just make sure to use your mute function on the phone because the two voices seem to conflict. We saw that happen with Andrew and the mayor. I'm gonna turn it over to Andrew for the roll call now.
Council President Papaleo.
Present.
Councilman Kyle Willis.
Present.
Councilwoman Lee Daly.
Present.
Councilman Nick Waters. Councilman Nick Waters, I saw you in there.
Present.
Councilwoman Melinda Isaac. Councilwoman Melinda Isaac.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Yes, present.
Councilman Jason McGuigan.
Present.
Councilman Robert Ruskowski.
Present.
Mayor Bob Fry.
Here.
Alex.
Present.
And I'm here, all present.
All right, Andrew, can I have the questions that were posed by email to the borough manager for the meeting from residents?
Absolutely. Now, we've gotten three questions. One of those questions, Alex, I'd like to run by you first. The resident did not want to release her name or address. She did provide it to me. Can I read the question into the record, knowing this person is a resident without providing it?
It's a public comment, so I would say that you can... What's... Well, let's hear the comment first.
Sure. All right, this person, sorry, this person sent it to me in two different emails, so I apologize. So, this person said, "Are basketball court allowed to be put in the middle of the street or in front of the bus stops? I can't even park my car at front because it gets hit by the balls. I, the bus driver, drive down the street at a high speed when the, I call them adult males, 10 to 15 get done playing, then young children go into the street and play with no adults watching them. The bus are not going to see them and someone is going to get hurt or worse. I can't even sit outside with all the foul language and the illegal pot smoking. This is not fair. We all should be able to enjoy our community. I live here 60 years, now taking care of my late 80-year parents. It's how to try to move them now, but I am just ready to pack up, leave. I have been up people, mess, beer cans, trash wraps, et cetera, for years, not no more. As I drive through this community, it's just getting worse. Kids gang up on car driver, ride, playing their chicken with their bikes, five to eight at a time. Won't even go out after four because of this. Broken down cars and trucks in back of people's houses on their lawns for years. We need enforce like we had 10 to 15 years ago. She would drive around every day, front and back, gave people notices about way their property looked, told them to clean it up, paint things, et cetera, or you were going to get fined. People respected her and tried to do what she asked them to do, with some complaints, but did it anyway. Coming down Taylor Drive from 7-Eleven, that whole area is a disgrace to all of us in this community. We could do better, but to accomplish this, we are going to need the opposite of this township to start enforcing our codes or changing them."
Andrew.
Yes.
Did 6,000 block of Taylor with a basketball?
She didn't specify, but we have discussed that. I suspect she's talking about that in particular.
I already talked to Chief Bear about the basketball playing. The other shop wasn't having it the first I heard.
I can also, I can also vouch for her about the school buses racing through here. It's happened three or four times that I've seen them do it. I called the school district about it before I was elected and they did nothing. But it is, it's a problem. The school bus drivers do not abide by our traffic laws or our speed limit at all.
Mayor, when you say about the basketball court, I mean, like, I'm a little confused. I used to play basketball when I was a kid. Is that, is that not a thing anymore?
Now, last month, and these weren't kids, these were 18, 19, 20-year-old kids. They had a net up in the middle of Taylor, wouldn't let the cars or buses through. Then this week, I got a complaint from a resident. They're in the alleys at 1, 2, and 3 in the morning, playing basketball in the 6,000 block of Taylor. And they're not kids.
Well, I mean, I was just, I was looking through the whole letter and she was going on about the kids playing basketball and then there's kids who are playing chicken on their bikes. I mean, kids are gonna have bicycles and basketball courts. I don't know.
Do you remember how the bikes, a couple of years ago, we had to get the police to put a stop to it? They were throwing the wheelies and coming toward the cars?
Yes.
I'm wondering if that's what they're talking about.
Maybe.
Okay, well, for the time being, Andrew, we'll just omit the name for the purposes of this conversation, but for the record, when we produce the minutes, I would tend to say that we're gonna have to disclose the comments' name and address. But I'll do some research into it, but I'm fairly certain that you can strike the identity of a public commenter from your minutes.
Andrew, do you have her contact information?
I do.
Okay. I'd like to, would it be okay, Alex, if I gave her a call to talk to her?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, sure. Maybe it's someone I should reach out to personally. Yeah, I'll call them tomorrow. What's the, what's the next question, Andrew?
The next question is from Sandy Adams. She lives at 736 Bennington Road in Falkroft. Sandy would like to take this opportunity to thank you and all of Borough Council for your faithful work during these trying times. She, "I so appreciate all of the phone updates and the Facebook updates. Thank you for partnering with Miller's Cafe to provide meals to our seniors and those in need. You are truly looking out for our community and I'm thankful. Some concerns I would like to see addressed. The biggest challenge is the condition of our back driveways. I live on Bennington near the top of the Even Side. The driveway between Taylor to our Bennington driveway is continued to deteriorate, is continuing to deteriorate. There are a couple houses with terrible potholes. I believe the houses are rentals and the landlords and tenants do not seem to care. To get into my back driveway where I park, I go down Taylor or Grant, around to Bennington, up Bennington, and then make a left into the side of my driveway. To avoid the larger holes on Delmar Drive, driveway between Taylor and Bennington, we have less significant potholes on the Even Bennington back driveway. The past several days, I have had difficulty doing this as they are working on Carter Road and Delview Drive. I'm concerned of damaging my car. What can be done to solve this problem? It's been going on for over a year and a half. Please help. Another concern, we have neighbors at 730 and 728 who park their cars parallel up and down the shared back driveway, creating a blockage for the trash pickup and for us getting to our private driveway. These cars will delay ambulance and fire assurance through the back driveway if needed. What can we do to help educate our borough with the dangers of this? Finally, I went to confirm that our borough taxes are due by June 15th, 2020 for the discount. Again, thank you for all you're doing for us, Sandy. And I'd like to add, I already let, confirmed with her that the extension, the 2% discount has been extended to June 15th, so she's good with that.
Okay, can I respond to the other two questions?
Yes.
Sandy, if you're watching this, I want you to know that the driveways are a major concern of councils as well. We had a plan devised that we were ready to move on before the outbreak of COVID-19. Unfortunately, given the circumstance, all of those plans have sort of been sidelined as we sort of try to navigate through this. The driveway repairs would involve a plan that would implement parking permit fees for people who live in areas that have common driveway. Those funds would be dedicated to a special account and those monies would be used for cost sharing with residents in order to repair their driveways. This solves two problems, our parking problem as well as our driveway problem, and it would allow us the ability to repair the driveways in large stretches rather than hodgepodge spotting, which is just a better way to repave them. There is a plan in place. We were still negotiating with council, but we, you know, we were ready to move on that before the outbreak and it's something that we will revisit as soon as, as soon as we get the okay from the engineer to move forward with that. Unfortunately, given the circumstance, other priorities have taken, sort of taken the top of the list. That's all I got on that. Is there any other questions, Andrew?
There's one more question, but does anybody have anything else they want to say about that before I get to it?
Yes, I'm sorry. Please, if anybody has anything to add, feel free.
All right, I will go ahead and read our final question or comment. It's from Pat Casey. Pat lives on the 400 block of Charmont Avenue. I didn't get the specific address, but this was, this came with a comment. "Thank you for your message inviting residents to voice concerns. I live on the 400 block of Charmont Avenue. I have noticed several times that the street light outside of 412 Charmont often goes off. It eventually does come back on, but when it's off, the area of the street is dangerously dark. We would appreciate the borough's help with this issue. Thank you so much, Pat Casey." I will say also for the record that I already have spoken, I reached follow-through to Pat just to let Pat know that we would, I would follow up with this tomorrow. This message came in a couple hours ago, but after we were closed.
Okay. All right, very good. And I think, was there a question from the fire chief as well, Andrew?
Yes, that is correct. One moment. He sent that to me yesterday. So I apologize.
That's okay. Don't worry.
So, our fire chief, Tom Weber, says, "Joe Papaleo asked me to send you an email to make sure the fire truck topic is talked about at tomorrow's committee meeting. Telesquirt 1 needs some repairs and also to start the process of getting complete specs to replace the telesquirt. It is an 18-month to two-year process, which would put the truck at the telesquirt at its end of its life cycle. Joe has the information to talk about the topic. Thank you."
Okay, I'd like to ask if, can we, Alex, are we allowed to have an executive session about this after the meeting?
Yes, you can.
Okay, what do I do? Just call that now? I'm fed, I'm gonna call an executive session post-meeting?
Yeah, that's it. And then, yeah, we'll conduct it and then we'll just make sure that we note that an executive session was conducted after the meeting in the minute notes.
Okay, all right, well, that's what we'll do. Okay. All right, Andrew, are you all finished?
Yep, one second. That's all of our questions.
Okay, so moving on to public finance and administration. Discuss the current state of borough finances and affairs as relevant due to COVID-19's crisis and theoretical borough programs. So Alex and I, we talked earlier about a program that I would have liked to have maybe piloted to try and help people that maybe were having trouble that didn't qualify for LIHEEP. Unfortunately, legal ramifications make that impossible right now. Not something we'll be able to do, so we can strike that from the agenda and read, you know, get back to the drawing board to see what other things we can do for residents through the crisis. And if anybody has any ideas, I'm certainly open to anything and everything that, you know, you might have. And I've said before, it's time to start getting creative and thinking of, you know, however, whatever we can do to help in new ways. So if you have any ideas now, share them. If you have them later, call me. Anybody have anything now?
I have, I have one. What about the, I heard you talking about LIHEEP. What about the cap program? Like, that might be able, or a budget encouraging, helping them to get on like a budget for PICO, if that's what we're talking about.
Right, so PICO does offer that. Unfortunately, in our community, there are, there is, you know, there's a group of people here who maybe are just under, or just over the qualifications for LIHEEP assistance. Maybe they make $20 more than the qualifier. And their inability to qualify for that is, especially through something like this, is crippling. Let's say the cap is $30,000 a year. If you make $30,000 a year, you know, you don't qualify for the help. So some people have already made that $30,000 from the beginning of the year, for the year, and have planned their life accordingly and spent accordingly to all of a sudden have a situation where they have no income. So for them, now that they're home all day, their utilities have skyrocketed and they don't have any way to pay for it. So it's sad and it's something that concerns me. It was something that was brought to me by a couple of people and I was hoping there was something we can do. But to answer your question, they already, so PICO offers that. We can encourage people to call PICO and activate those options. PICO does offer it. They're our budget fund, available for people.
Joe, I got a question. We gave PICO $37,000, I believe it was. And is there something they can offer our residents that fall into this exact program that you're talking about? I mean, here's a, here's a company that just literally reached out to us due to COVID-19 and we're gonna ask them to send that relief to our residents. I don't think that's out of line. Solicitor, I mean, get us a solicitor, what he thinks.
To make the request of the company to provide that service would not be legally out of line for the borough to do. For the borough to donate money directly to those persons in need while excluding other borough citizens from obtaining that benefit is expressly forbidden. The problem here that we run into with all these ideas is that the borough is bound by the constitution of both the federal government and the state, who provide equal treatment under the law. So if a program or a benefit is going to be provided to a set of citizens, it also simultaneously has to be made available to all, regardless of whether there's an income or a status or any other restriction. So that's the issue that we're running into. Again, if a third party...
I have a, I have a question real fast. How then is the county able to offer special grants and loans to businesses who apply with qualifiers? So if the county government's allowed to do it, why isn't the municipal government allowed to accept applications from residents, approve the ones that qualify, negotiate on their behalf with the, with the utilities company, and pay a discount rate on their behalf to squash their bill for the two months that they've been crippled financially? I guess I get it. I mean, I just, I don't understand why it's okay for one division of government that is in state or federal, namely the county, to do something like what they're doing and yet we're then precluded from establishing qualifiers, residents who qualify. Like, I don't, I mean, we, it's something that the federal and state governments do every day with the programs that they offer to people in need. This is, this is something geared to the people who are maybe $20 over that qualifier and crippled by their circumstance, but they don't qualify for help because of the $20 extra they make a month, which is ridiculous. But I get what you're saying. We're gonna have to get back to the drawing board. Jason, why don't we get to work on that and see, we'll work together on that and see if there's something we can't come up with.
Sounds good.
All right, so that's that. We'll get to the next item, which is to discuss the H&amp;H trash pickup renewal and the possibility of contracting them for bulk trash pickup as well. Like to open that up for discussion.
Joe, I know I always have a lot to say, but I'm gonna jump in first here. The problem I have with it is us, like, right now, we give them the service because we use highway to do it. Problem with actually paying for it, you're seeing from the dumpster that's out back, a lot of people who ran out their homes and people leave their homes and leave all the stuff in there and they try to either put all the stuff out on the sidewalk or now up at our dumpster. We're not a clean-out service. So it's my only, my whole point is, and, and, I mean, me and Bob, like, pull our hair out. Because people were putting mattresses out, you know, like, for the whole house. So you'd have three beds outside, they're calling bulk trash. It's like, how do we, how do we monitor it? I think we should be doing less bulk trash, not more.
I, I mean, I definitely see what you're saying and I, and I, there's definitely some merit to that argument. I'm kind of looking at it from the other angle, too. The restrictions on bulk trash over a long period of time have culminated into a situation where people are sorting, who can't seem to get the scheduling right or can't seem, you know, for whatever reason, can't seem to get it out of their house or else their property. It's starting to junk up the neighborhood. In some cases, it's starting to junk up the inside of people's houses and this backflow over time just worsens. My theory is if we help them take care of it all at once for, you know, a purge holiday, whatever it is, for two months, we could do it every trash day, a couple items. And then after that, two months is over, one, one bulk trash day a month for three items. But I don't know. I mean, we gotta price it out and see. I mean, I get what you're saying, that we're not a clean-out service and, you know, I think that the trash collection services, the ones that we currently use, they also do work in Glen Olden and they're able to make decisions at the time of pickup, like, we're either gonna take this or we're not.
So here's, there's another thing about that that worries me though, Joe.
Say, say again.
H&amp;H isn't, the drivers aren't really the best in dealing with the residents around here. Is my experience.
So, mind if I just make a comment, just so you guys know how this sort of operates already and some of the issues that I see with it? H&amp;H is not perfect, but in consulting with other municipalities, it doesn't actually sound like there's a substantial, maybe there is a long, but there's a substantial difference in the quality of the service provided from what I'm seeing in Falkroft and what we're seeing in other municipalities. But the bulk trash is a big difference. I do think that, I'm not as much concerned about the people just junking it up. I knew we'd have some of that with this dumpster that we put out back. It was not going to be possible to police it in the way that we would have liked. We can't be checking IDs. But I think that the problem is, well, the way that the bulk trash currently functions before the pandemic, people call, they schedule bulk trash pickup. Either something gets missed from the list for whatever reason, technical issue or otherwise, or the person doesn't put out their item in time and then puts it out late and then gets a ticket. Or they put it out too early and get a ticket. You know, or the list fills up. We only have room for 14 different households and it fills up too fast and we've got a ton of overflow into the next week and as a result, people are putting it off two, three, and four weeks in advance. When these mistakes happen, they're called into the office to take office time and office staff resources. And then I don't think it gets done as efficiently. I'm getting calls from neighbors about, hey, there's a mattress or a fridge or a table out back at such and such address. And so now I have to drop the ticket and then we have to have them come back in another day and then that interferes with what our highway guys, I think, could be doing with that time. I'm not saying that it's the worst scenario. It's not. But I think we could, if we could perform service more efficiently by saying more than two items to prevent the bulk dumps that we would definitely see. And perhaps maybe one day a month, but for all residents willing. Or two days a month or something like that, so it's not too much volume.
You have any, you have the call, Andrew?
So H&amp;H is gonna draw something up for us. I hope we get it in time for this, but we don't have one, we don't have it yet. It actually may be another week. That's the, that's the concern, obviously.
I wonder, just when we get that number back, I wonder if it would be cheaper to hire seasonal help than it would be to use H&amp;H. It'd almost be great to hire a couple, maybe some kids are home from school for the summer. And what my point is, let's say they tell you it's 40 grand a year for bulk trash. You could hire a couple of kids and then they could also help out with the grass cutting and everything when they're not doing bulk trash.
Yeah.
It's an idea.
Yeah, no, it's a good idea.
I think, I don't think, I don't think it's a bad idea, but it, and I don't, I think it's actually, it's not a bad idea at all. But, um, bulk trash is a year-round issue. It's not necessarily a seasonal issue. And my, Andrew, what's the, what's the specs on that? Will we get a lot of bulk trash in January when this started, when we started?
Absolutely. I didn't notice, I mean, to be fair, only had two months of doing bulk trash since I worked here. But I didn't notice the increase or decrease in volume from any week. We seem to encounter...
Are we allowed to hire seasonal help that, that works year-round? Can we call them seasonal help, but they could have part-time hours the year through?
That would be a question that are for Alex and our HR person. Not something I expected him to have to discuss today, but I'm confident...
Because I think there might be a labor conflict there. That's what I'm getting at. I don't know. I'm just...
Fair with you.
Yeah.
Bulk trash, bulk trash costs us a lot of money. Maybe you can't get Joe to give us the figures. You figure the dump trucks going down there dumping, that's what, $65? The dumpsters being picked up? Maybe we could tell the residents, one item a month, and any more than that, you're gonna get charged. The dresser, $10 or, you know, whatever we come up with.
And Joe, just to cover the labor end of it, just put my old business agent hat on. If you told me that I could either lose the scope of work to H&amp;H, which is bulk trash, or I could get part-timers to come in and do the work, they'll take the lift every time.
Okay.
Know what I mean?
Yep. Alex, are we allowed to add this item to the executive session?
Yeah, you could. I mean, yeah. Yeah, it's an employment issue, a potential one. It might not necessarily needed to be added to an executive session, but we can certainly discuss it.
Okay. Jason, can we revisit that after the meeting?
Yeah, that works. Thanks, man.
Okay. All right, so I do, I do think we should still entertain the numbers from H&amp;H. Andrew, are they putting together a proposal for, you know, the menu of options for us?
They are. And I will say that apparently the way some places do this, and I think that we should not be doing this this way, hopefully, is charging a fee for the item. So some towns charge apparently up to $25 for the item. So if, you know, I was to get rid of my heavy couch, which I've been meaning to do, that would cost me 25 bucks, which is cheaper than bringing it to the dump, but, you know.
It's a bloody nightmare, isn't it?
Joe, Joe, can you hear me? Is there a way for us to tax that bill if they do, if they are charged? Can we tax that to their sanitation, their specific sanitation tax bill? And they could pay it then or they can pay it upfront?
No, there's no way, no way. The trash fees are set fee on the tax bill. That would have to be an individual billing type of service.
Okay, so then we would run into more clerical work in the office with, having to have personnel to bill. Okay.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so... Yeah, we're gonna have to hash out some kind of compromise then that works for everybody, but I definitely, Andrew, definitely pursue the menu of options. Let them give us, you know, a couple options to choose from.
Yeah, to the, for the record, I'm not advocating for that specific plan, only to say that that's apparently how some places do it. And, you know, look, if we're looking for cost savings, but I don't think we would add particularly...
Do we have the option to open it up for bid for other providers?
Not, not a question for me. I'm not sure if that would interfere with our trash contract.
That's right, Andrew. I mean, it would just depend on the terms of your current contract, if you could even do that right now.
Well, they're not currently doing the bulk pickup right now.
Right.
Do they retain the exclusive right to handle it? I mean, again, we're gonna have to look at the contract.
Yeah, yeah, I'd have to take a look. I don't think it's been done since 2015, so I will send that along. I will send you along what they would like us to renew after the meeting. I just added in the email about...
Meanwhile, is Joe Pisani coming to us from a secret lair? From your secret layer. And that looks like, that looks like some Dr. Evil stuff that's coming to us.
Yeah, I thought you were DJing somewhere.
So let's, we'll add that to the executive session. We'll hash some more details on that out, too. Let's move on to Public Works. Kyle Willis to discuss work adjustments being made due to COVID-19 crisis.
Andrew, do we have any updates on what the current, what it currently looks like for what Public Works, the highways employees are doing right now?
Yeah, so right now, they've been cutting grass. We've been sort of speeding that up because it was a little slow to the start. We've been, we had the lawn mowers out right now with that zero turn, I think it's called. Somebody can correct me on that, is out. I expect it back tomorrow, but that's not definite. The, other than, other than the, you know, picking up trash at our parks and mowing grass, we're not doing a ton.
They, they cleaned up the borough, all the stuff from the bulk pickup. It was up there, everything but mattresses today.
The mattresses are still there?
Yeah. There's no room. The dumpster's full. We got everything else that was laying out.
Okay. Okay. So I think unless anyone else had any things they think needed to happen, I think that's more than enough for the, what they normally do for them to be working on right now.
Andrew, just one thing, I'm sorry, Kyle cut you off. Andrew, can you direct the highway department to, there's a, there's a patch of grass the borough owns at the end of Woodland Avenue at the cul-de-sac? I don't, they've gotten to it yet this season. I heard the grass is pretty high. Again, that's the end of Woodland Avenue at the cul-de-sac. The borough is responsible for mowing that. I don't know if anybody's gotten to it yet. They probably just forgot it. I don't think it was a, you know, an act of, an act of avoidance, I think they just forgot to get to it. Do you copy that?
Yeah, I got that. I have that on my notes.
Kyle, do you have anything else? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Other, other than that, that was exactly what I was asking for at that point. Other than that, I don't have anything new. So unless anyone had any concerns or questions about the specific work that's done, that's it.
Did that piece of land over last year, Kyle?
Say that again.
Is that the piece of land took over last year?
Um, wait, say it one more time for me. I'm sorry.
Is that piece of land we took over last year?
I'm not entirely sure.
Mayor, is, mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, so I'm not aware of that. Is there a piece of land that we took over at the end of Woodland Avenue last year that we didn't prior, priorly own?
Yeah, yeah, the owner took care of it.
So we don't own the land?
No, we do, but the owner, the guy that lives next door took care of it.
Oh, I got you. So it's, it's something that's, okay, so it's new to the routine. I get it.
New to the routine, yeah.
Okay. So that's an easy thing to overlook. All right, yeah, Andrew, just let them, just remind them that that's our, that's our responsibility now. Copy that? Okay. All right. Moving on to public, Kyle, you have nothing else, correct?
That is correct.
Moving on to public health and literacy, Councilwoman Isaac, do you have anything to discuss?
Um, not at this time.
Okay. Municipal planning and zoning, Councilwoman Waters.
Am I on there? I hear you. Okay, here you go.
We got you.
No new businesses to discuss. No new businesses to discuss.
All right, very good. Parks and recreation, Councilwoman Daly.
Nope, nothing fun.
Municipal legislation, Councilwoman Wigan.
No new business.
The new construction committee, Councilwoman Wigan.
I do have a little bit of issue. So after a very, very, very long journey getting to a point where we could go out to bid and a lot of stress, I think Joe, January when we met and the numbers that were being thrown around were, well, maybe we can do it for seven, maybe we can do it for 7.5. We did get the bids in. I would ask the solicitor if it's, I'm sure I can get the numbers out, even though we're not voting on that today, correct?
Yeah, because they've already been publicly open, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
So the numbers, the numbers that came in, again, after talking, you know, it seemed like it was getting away from us because we, the long wait, we held up with our cap for about a year, which cost us, which we thought was going to cost us really construction cost. Turns out that we had a bid back of $4 million, $189,000, which is better than any bid we thought we were going to get, whether it was two, three years ago or January 1. So, and it's a good bid from what I understand is a reputable company, so I think that worked well for this project.
I agree. I want to add, too, it's also a company based out of Fallcroft. Their office location is directly across from our current borough hall, so it would be, you know, a small business that's going to be building, building the new complex. Jason, didn't they say, didn't the architect mention that he was going to try and negotiate with the contractor as well to see if there were some things we could do in-house, like security equipment, et cetera, that might make it even cheaper, right?
They have one there, the Bob system, which is a dirty system that they use, and he said he's going to look to omit some of that stuff that we can get. Yeah, so I think he's going to try to cut, not cut corners per se, but he's still shopping around to try to get a price on everything we can do, which is great.
Awesome. Okay. So what's the next, what's the next move on this?
Two weeks from now, right?
I couldn't hear that. Could you repeat?
Our meeting is what? Now?
Yes, the meeting is the two weeks from now, so it would be the 19th.
Okay, so two weeks from now, we'll vote to accept the lowest bid. You know, I mean, not to get ahead of ourselves, Lynn's going to look through the bid to make sure everything we want is on there, but Lisa, the same for the site work. Everything is up to par and their recommendation, tap the lowest bid, tap that and start planning with construction.
Jason, can you, can you ask Lynn to send over the bids? We haven't seen them as of yet.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Lisa, I'm going to, I have a, yeah, I'll make sure you get it. I'll make sure everybody has it. Everybody should have that info by now. I'll have that conversation with the-
Yeah, we, we asked them today to send us a copy of the bid tab, which, which they did send over this afternoon, so we have seen that, but we haven't been able to evaluate any of the bid from, from our end. Just to, just to dovetail just a little bit, one of the things that we ought to, since we know that this contractor will be your low bidder, is, is to do what Bob is doing, see if he can value engineer the project. So there may be things that the contractor thinks that we can do that's not going to compromise the quality of the project, but give us a better number. So do that now, before you do the contract, before you actually put the contract up for a vote, so that you have a change order to that, to that final number, and that will be the contract number. So you try to do that value engineering between now and two weeks from now.
Great.
Okay.
I also understand that the site work is going to be worked on by a local Fallcroft person as well, so it's basically an all-Fallcroft project.
I like that angle of it.
Yeah.
So Lisa, what is it that you're asking first? I didn't, I was confused by that. Did you, is there something that we, is there something you, what you're asking for us to do in advance of the, of the meeting?
Well, it's not anything you would do. It would be something that Bob Lynn's office and our office would do, to sit down with the contractor and see if we can't find ways of taking what we have on the bid spec. For example, and I'll give you a really quick example, Norwood Library that we did. When we did that, we specified a certain roof material. Contractor came back and said, you know, we can use the same, this material, a different brand, it works, has the same values, has everything. We saved quite a bit of money. So that's the value engineering that you would do, just to try to lower the numbers even more. But what you want to do is you want to do it between now, you don't want to do a change order after you have a contract because you're going to lose dollars because of the bargaining power that you have. So once the contract's signed, you kind of lose some of that bargaining power. So we want to do it beforehand, and I think they'll be willing to work.
Okay.
Does that make more sense?
Yeah. Are you guys going to put that together this, in this week or next?
I, I have to talk to Bob, but I think that's probably what, what Jason was referring to when he said Bob was trying to get some, some clarification on some of the scope of work.
Joe, what I'm going to do, I'm going to, I'm going to set up a conference call with Lynn. We'll do Lynn, I think probably a good idea to have solicitor's office on, along with Joe Pessenti, Lisa Pessani, just to do kind of a, hey, we got our bid in, we got two weeks, what are we going to do? And I'll set something up tomorrow or the next day, so we can kind of hack all that out.
That's good.
All right. Yeah, just, just make sure everybody's included, needs to be included is there and then-
Why, Andrew should definitely be on that as well.
Okay. Andrew?
Yep.
You're on that. All right. All right, good. Anything else, Councilman Wigan?
No, that's it for now.
Do we have any notes from the borough manager?
Do we have any notes from the borough manager? I'm sorry, I had not taken myself off mute again. Yeah, I just wanted to talk about sort of the way the borough's been functioning and talk about how we're doing things, talk about what we all collectively, since we're all here in the same place, and what we want to see the borough doing, how we picture the borough functioning. For starters, as everybody knows, the borough offices are closed. I am working from home. I have a new laptop, thank you, Steve, that I'm using here that, so I can get a little more done, because I've been using my cell phone for emails, things like that. Calls are still being forwarded. Code stuff is still being taken care of two days a week. Approximately those dates are being changed, so there's not a regular pattern for residents to evade. We are doing, issuing permits, and it's not contingency. Alex, please correct me on the word, because I can never remember. We are issuing use and occupancy permits to people, essentially, well, Alex.
Yeah, you're issuing temporary UNOs for the time being with a big disclaimer that essentially says that the second that COVID-19 is over, an actual inspection will occur.
Yeah. You know, that way people can move in and out. You know, I am in the office probably one to two days a week combined over one or two different days. I was there yesterday, I'll be in Thursday again, just to sign documents, scan documents. I've been working on the business plan, things like that. Besides that, you know, there's, there's nothing. We have, we have, I've been speaking, working with Amy White. We've got, coming in sometime next week, we expect, we hope to receive as a donation from a local business in Fallcroft, 2,500 masks to be distributed to residents. The remainder of that donation will go to our first responders, but we'll have 2,500 masks for residents. So at some point, when we get them in, which we don't know the date yet, we should do a drive-by event where we hand them out. That's my suggestion, but I wanted to talk to you about it. And then, again, we can't pick a day because we don't have them, but I wanted to go over that with you.
That's great news. Do we know who the business owner is?
It's, it's a restaurant, and forgive me, it's, it's one of the Chinese restaurants. I cannot remember the name.
In Fallcroft?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Say again.
Mongolian Grill.
I believe it's the one next to Miller's, but I could be wrong. Is that what it's called?
No, that's, that's Yummy Yummy, I think.
Oh, then it's the other one, dude.
Okay. All right. So to whomever that is, if they're watching this broadcast, thank you. We appreciate that. That's amazing. We look forward to ironing out a date to, to distribute. Is that it? Andrew, from you?
That's it.
We have any old business to cover?
Just a little bit. When we get, when we get into executive session, I kind of threw you guys on something last month that's going on down at Trading Center. In executive session, I want to break that down a little bit more thorough.
Okay. We're set. I didn't catch that, but we'll, what's the safety issue again? I want to make sure we can talk about it in the executive session.
Well, just what's going on down at Trading Center. I want to update Council on that. I've discussed it with you. I want to discuss it with everybody, what we're doing down at Trading Center.
Okay. All right. Very good. All right. Any new business? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Second.
Can I get a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I seconded it. Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we've got all ayes, unanimous. Motion to adjourn, meeting is adjourned at 7:47 PM.